We'll call the meeting to order, a special meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council, for Thursday, May 24, 2018. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. Councilmember Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez is not present. Mayor Potem Rouse?
Here.
Mayor Murillo?
I, or here.
Councilmember Hart not yet present. And Councilmember Sin?
Here.
Okay. Good enough. We have a public comment for an item that's not on the agenda. So come on up, Ms. Solange Sanwesa. You have two minutes. Oh, wait.
Mayor Murillo, members of the council. My name is Solange Sanwesa, and I'm one of Dario Pinney's attorneys in the two lawsuits brought against Mr. Pinney by the City Attorney's Office on behalf of the people in the city of Santa Barbara Superior Court. I'm here to request equal time for rebuttal at a meeting in the near future when the council has time to hear it. Neither Mr. Pinney nor our office received notice of the City Attorney's presentation this past Tuesday. First, I'm also here to address some of the inaccuracies in the presentation made by the City Attorney's Office. First, the City Attorney's Office, celebration of its performance in the two lawsuits, gave the false impression that the city achieved total victory in their receivership lawsuits. This was not the case. Judge Stern's ruling on April 18, 2018, was a split decision. The city was not granted a health and safety receiver over four of the 11 properties. As to the seven properties with tenants where the health and safety receiver was appointed, Mr. Pinney and our office offered to stipulate to the now-appointed receiver, Mr. Huffman, eight months ago. But the City Attorney's Office refused to stipulate to Mr. Pinney's, to Mr. Huffman as the receiver, bringing the issue all the way to trial. Because the city proposed its own affordable housing director, Rob Frederick, as receiver. The city lost on this issue when Judge Stern found that Mr. Frederick had no experience and had potential conflicts denying his appointment. Mr. Pinney will be bringing his own motion for attorney fees for those four victories and for prevailing on the choice of receiver. And this, this issue comes up because on Tuesday, the City Attorney's Office, in requesting a substantial amount of money to complete these cases, represented to all of you. The difference between now and 2016 is that today, we have a court order that assures us reimbursement for both our enforcement case and our attorney fees. This is not true. This is a false statement. There is no court order assuring the city of Santa Barbara's recovery of its legal fees or any party's recovery of legal fees. Both sides will have an opportunity to bring a motion for attorney fees, and we believe Mr. Pinney is entitled to his fees because the City Attorney's Office has refused to cooperate with Mr. Pinney's efforts to repair.
Thank you, Ms. Sanwesa.
Thank you.
I gave you a little extra time as a courtesy.
Thank you. Mayor Murillo?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We'll move on to our noticed item for today. If we're in budget season, would you read that for us?
Certainly. Item 2, Fiscal Year 2019 Recommended Operating and Capital Budget.
And we'll be focusing today, Mr. Casey, on the Fire Department and the Police Department. Please, staff, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I want to just begin by, first of all, thanking all the Fire Department staff and Finance Department staff and other, many other departments' help in preparing our this year's budget. So we'll start off with going through our outline here. We're going to look at the, just a quick overview of the Fire Department, the proposed fiscal year 2019 plan, the proposed fee changes, some of our key initiatives and objectives, and then a quick review of the Thomas and Montecito debris flow. And I've already been given a hard time about having so many slides in my presentation, so I'll try to move through it quickly. If you have any questions, please...
We love your slides.
Feel free to, feel free to interrupt me. So just quick, on our mission statement, we, the members of the Fire Department, are committed to ensuring the safety and protection of our community through the preservation of life, property, and the environment. There's our vision statement. And let's go to the next one, Ron. Some of our values. Okay, go ahead. So this is a current organizational chart for the Fire Department. It's a little difficult to see, but essentially, we're not asking for any new positions. We have, there's a slight reorganization in some areas, but essentially, the same organization that we've had for a number of years. Besides the full-time employees that we have, we employ a number of hourly's and some contract employees. Our medical services director, primarily for education and call review, EMS nurse educator, who is the person that educates all of our firefighters in their EMT recertification program, our public, part-time public education coordinator, special ops, which is kind of a technology go-between, between city IT, PDIT, and the Fire Department, and our fire warehouse specialist. So Fire Department has eight stations. We work 48-hour shifts, 29 assigned positions per day, one battalion chief, and then the crews there, one at the airport, or, excuse me, seven at the city fire stations, one at the airport, and then a truck crew at Station 1. Total daily staffing of 29. Quick overview of our fleet, 14 engines. That includes the Type 1 engines that you see around town, as well as the Type 3 brush engines, the smaller brush engines, the ladder trucks that we have, some of the special vehicles, hazmat-heavy rescue, patrols, utilities, the rigs at the airport, which are their aircraft rescue and firefighting rigs, and then various sedans, pickups, and SUVs. So I'm going to turn it over to our business manager, Ron Leckey, for comment on the budget.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm pleased to present to you the proposed fiscal year 2019 plan. Now, as you know, the Fire Department is composed of three make funds, the most of which is the general fund at $28 million, and then we also have our fire equipment fund and our wildland fire suppression fund. The general fund contains most of our programs, which include fire operations and airport operations, fire prevention, training and recruitment, emergency services, and wildland mitigation. The fire equipment replacement fund was established first in fiscal year 2016, and it operates similar to the vehicle, the fleet's vehicle replacement fund, where we're trying to reserve monies for large purchases that we anticipate having to make, such as radio purchases, department-wide, and self-contained breathing apparatus-type equipment. The wildland fire suppression fund was established by a vote of property owners in July of 2006 in the high, city high-fire hazard zone, and they approved the creation of this benefit assessment district to provide services to the area for road cleaners to maintain evacuation routes, defensible space, and vegetation management to reduce fuel loads. This year is, we're proposing, or we're recommending in green, the fiscal year 2019 budget. And what we're looking at here is a comparison of, or a mid-cycle adjustments, the orange column, and we're looking at increases to the recommended budget from the proposed 19 budget, which was already established last year. So we'll just look at each of these categories individually. First is salaries and benefits, and we see a $319,000 increase, or 1.3%. Now, what this is primarily is, and we'll be talking about this later, but we're, it's primarily $250,000 of that increase is an increase for expenditures for mutual aid costs. And then there is a $60,000 increase to pers benefits as well, contained in that line. Supplies and services, we also see an increase of 5.3%, or almost $50,000, from the proposed budget. And what we're seeing is our supplies and services, we have eight fire stations, they're basically like running houses 24/7, and we're just seeing increased costs in wire and fuel, and we need to increase supplies and services to maintain core services to those stations. Allocated costs, see a small increase of almost $14,000. And as you know, allocated costs are services provided to the Fire Department by other city departments. And those kinds of services are the vehicle maintenance and replacement fund, building maintenance, computer network and infrastructure, GIS systems, communications, telephones, and liability insurance. And our final line we see is equipment, and we see a small reduction of almost $16,000. And what this is happening is because we're reclassifying or reallocating some money from equipment up into supplies and services to, like I mentioned earlier, so we can provide the utilities to our stations and other supplies. And then our revenues, we're a general fund subsidized department, but we do have some revenues, and the proposed plan of $3.8 million, we're recommending to increase that, almost $130,000, to $3.8 million, but just a 0.2% increase. The first category is airport reimbursement, and this is revenues that the Fire Department receives from the airport for services we provide, emergency and firefighting services we provide to the airport. Mutual aid, this is pretty much the largest change we're seeing in our recommended budget, and we see a $400,000 increase to $1 million in mutual aid revenues, we're expecting. And what we've seen over the last 10 years, there's been a trend of mutual aid going up and up, the revenues we receive because of the services we're providing throughout the state of California and other regions. And I will point out that if you look at fiscal year projected 18, 3.5 million, it's been a huge year, obviously, with the Thomas fire and Montecito debris flows, plus a number of other incidents we responded to, such as Santa Rosa fires and Napa fire and throughout the state. So we're, we're recommending to increase from $600,000 to $1 million, our revenues. And like I said, we're seeing at least $1 million in revenues every year for the last 10 years, so seems like a pretty easy decision to make there. American medical response is, we're recommending to increase that, just $2,600, 1.3%. And this is a rate adjustment requested by AMR and approved by the AMS Agency of the Santa Barbara County Health Department. So there are six city agencies involved in this contract, along with AMR. Fees and service charges, we're actually reducing our recommended budget by about $15,000, and this is primarily due to where we removed a number of fire inspection, small space occupancies that we would be doing fire inspections on, and instead, we are inspecting the whole shell of the building, so it reduces the number of inspections. So we're just, you can see our projected for this year is going to be 185,000, and so for the recommended, we think will be more in line with, we'll receive about 189,500. The property 172 half-cent sales tax is a permanent half-cent sales tax that was approved by voters in 1992, and it's dedicated to local public safety. And we received these estimates and this increase from our finance department. The wildland fire assessment increase that we see, recommending of $5,800 or 2.2%, well, this is, well, as presented to City Council this past May 15, the Fire Prevention Bureau recommended this change, and it was unanimously approved to, as part of the assessment district's renewal process, and this is the revenues that were, that will be generated by that renewal process. So just a slide or two on our proposed fees. As I mentioned at the Finance Committee earlier this month, we have increased our fees across the board about 3%. It's a cost recovery program, and our costs are going up, so we can justify increasing our fees by 3%, rounded to the nearest dollar, and I mentioned that we did remove these small commercial occupancies. As an example of how those fees affect people that pay them, for a half-hour inspection of an apartment and hotel, the current rate of $28 increases a dollar to $29. And then our Fire Prevention Bureau also does a number of plan checks for people's plans to, for permitting, and an example of one of those fee increases is $151 for this residential dwelling to $156. And that concludes my presentation of this, my portion of this presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Leckey, I was wondering about a couple of items. Oops, sorry about that. The vehicle replacement fee, that's an allocated cost.
Yes.
So we, that goes to the general fund, and then when the Fire Department wants to do something like replace a fire engine, for example, I mean, does it be disproportionate with other departments' vehicle costs, I would think? How does that work?
What's the, how does what work?
How does that, how do you, so you need a $1 million fire engine, but you've dedicated, in other words, are they set aside specific to fire in the general fund, or is it just a conglomerate of funds, and it depends on who gets there first? How does that work?
No, there is an actual fire, there's a, there's a whole vehicle replacement fund in the general fund.
Right.
That contains all vehicles for the city, and Fire Department is a component of that. So we plan for when engines are going to be retired, and we're calculating what the new engine's going to be costing.
Okay.
And reserve it for that.
All right, very good. And in terms of mutual aid, is that, we always see these big numbers shifting in and out of the department, as we get these budget reports every year. Does that represent like a dollar-for-dollar full-cost recovery? How does that work?
Thank you for that question, yes. So we're part, we're part of several contracts to provide resources in the mutual aid system throughout California. And so annually, we determine our rates. So we do get provided, we send out our firefighters and equipment, and we get, we paid by whatever the incident, whoever is in charge of the incident, whether it's the Forest Service or whether it's Cal OES, and we receive all the monies that we pay our firefighters to go fight that fire and our equipment, we receive that back to us. Plus, we receive, and we determine administrative rate each year, basically a markup rate for the costs and the use of those materials, and the use and cost of administrative staff, so it's called administrative rate fee, and that fluctuates between maybe 15% and 18% of every dollar that we bill out, we receive a 15% to 18% increase to that.
Thank you.
Good questions. Anybody else? Okay. Next section. Chief Waldron.
So we want to talk now a little bit about our performance and work objectives. Some of the key initiatives that we're looking at are fire station dispatch alerting system, which is a new system that's, that'll be installed in all the fire stations, that will provide for better dispatching and also more efficiency at the dispatch center. The dispatchers will be able to dispatch calls and continue their interrogation of the caller, finding out the facts that they need to further provide resources to the call. Time and attendance scheduling software system, this is what's known as telestaff, and it allows us to better schedule our folks in a more, a much more efficient way. We spend a lot of time filling the fire stations on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis, so that'll be a great improvement to our system. Replace the ARF, or one of the ARF apparatus at the airport, these are the big firefighting, aircraft firefighting rigs at the airport, be replacing one of those, and then conducting live-fire training for operations personnel. So a quick look at some of the events, major events that have affected us over the last year. Thomas fire, which began, as you know, December 4, and wasn't contained until mid-January. Some of the statistics on that, total of 281,893, most of that being in the forest and on state lands, but some, a small amount in local jurisdictions such as Santa Paula, Ventura, and a small piece in Santa Barbara. This is just a progression map, and you can see basically from, from the greens through, moving towards the west, it's, it documents just the days of the fire and how the fire progressed through both the back country and the front country, in Ventura, along the coast, and then along the front country of Santa Barbara County through Carpinteria into Total of 800, or, excuse me, 8,526 personnel at the height of the fire, including 158 hand crews, dozers, 972 engines, which is quite extraordinary. I don't think I've ever been on a fire, been associated or known of a fire with 972 engines. Go ahead, Ron. So city resources that were committed to the Thomas fire for the length of the fire, we had three engines assigned, along with numerous overhead positions, and overhead positions are basically those either incident commanders or liaisons or division supervisors, strike team leaders, that kind of thing. And we had up to 25 personnel assigned, actually assigned to the fire, and, and almost our entire department contributed in some way, shape, or form during the, the time of that fire, either working the fire or providing backfill at the stations. That's fine. Retardant dropped in the fire, 2,203,000 gallons. Water dropped, 5, 5 million, almost 6 million gallons. 2,529 hours of flight time. Structures lost, 1,063, most of those being in Ventura County, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Ventura. We lost 10 structures in Santa Barbara County also. Little bit about the public edu, or, excuse me, the public information. 252,692 Facebook impressions, Twitter impressions, trap lines, those are the, the sandwich boards that you see around town, whether it be in, in front of the market or library, other public places that allow people to get information, updated information on the fire. So total cost of the fire, $203,727,722. Thomas fire, of course, as we all know, led to one of the most extreme incidents in, in the history of Santa Barbara County, and that was the debris flow. So planning for the debris flow began while the fire was actually still burning in December, and some of the things that we identified in Santa Barbara County and the city were threats to Sycamore Canyon, or possible threats to Sycamore Canyon, all the way east to Carpinteria County line, with possible impacts to Highway 101, which we know happened, and as well as Highway 192. 20,000 homes and, potential for 20,000 homes and businesses cut off or affected by debris flow and flooding. Jamison-Jubelter Lakes, doesn't mention Kachuma there, which was also a threat. This was a big concern for all of us, the effect that it could have on the watershed and the water supply for Santa Barbara. That proved, I think, a little less than we had feared, but still a threat in the upcoming years. Ranch farm, greenhouse operations, and what the experts say is a three-to-five-year problem for these debris flows after major fires like the Thomas fire. So we're through year one, which is the most critical, and the thresholds will certainly change, but we're still in, we're still looking at a lot of threat coming. So just a couple of, just a couple of photos of the debris flow itself, this was, these were the, a couple of the structures that were burned in the early hours of the debris flow, and the gas line ruptured on, in the upper San Ysidro drainage. Continue on. Just kind of an indication of the power of, of that flow. And when you think about it, that mud came down from the upper reaches of the San Ynez Range, down to the beach, all within about a minute and a half to two minutes. So incredible power. So just back up for one second there, Ron. So this is a photo from the Montecito Inn, looking north and towards the construction on the corner of Olive Mill and Coast Village Road. So you can see that the city itself did, was affected by the mud flow, not nearly as badly, of course, as Montecito. However, it greatly affected our businesses along the Coast Village Road corridor. So decision points going into this year, we were looking at .3 inches of rain in 15 minutes during the debris flow of January 9. We actually received .5 inches or half an inch in five minutes, and that's what caused all the problems. And then we had numerous other storms, three other storms after the January 9 incident that were predicted to reach these thresholds, in which we up-staffed a lot of resources and prepared to, to deal with the same thing again. Quick map of the, the Montecito area with the city on the left, the red areas being the, the debris flow areas in which were the high-impact areas, and then the green area, less impact, but still... but still in situations where they're cut off from the, from the, from services and potentially cut off from being able to get to food and water and all that kind of stuff. This is a flood potential map of the city of Santa Barbara. It was developed two years ago, prior to the quote "El Nino" event that we didn't have. But just planning for that, you can see the main drainage is there and how the, how the flow affects the lower areas of the city. This, we're also working on a debris flow type map, which will take into consideration burn scars behind the city, and how that affects the, the water flow and debris flow in the city. This is a bit difficult to read from your point of view, but, so this, this was what we used in the early stages to predict, to use the National Weather, National Weather Service prediction and to upstaff our resources to prepare for that. And you can see on the left there, it talks about the forest, forecast meeting one-year burn area thresholds, which was that earlier slide, .3 inches in 15 minutes. Significant rainfall events. And then on the right, it shows the fire departments, local fire departments, and what they do, or what we plan to do, and did do in numerous occasions when we had that kind of weather predicted. And as, as I said before, that's going to change a little bit in this coming year, but still, the threat is out there. Any questions?
I don't see any lights over there. Councilmember Friedman?
Thanks. I just had a few questions, just to, for, for, I've read that in a couple articles that the revegetation has been slower than they'd hoped in some of the areas. So if you could speak to that a little bit, and then also, how does that affect going into next year, your plans for, for upstaffing? And then have some more questions, a couple more questions after that.
Yep. So the, the, the growth has been less than, than hoped for, and that's mainly due to the fact that we didn't get a lot of rain this year. Although we got a lot of rain at one time, we're still much behind our seasonal, seasonal average, so we didn't get the, that and the conditions of the slope. We didn't get the growth that we, of course, would like, and that will, we'll be coordinating with County OEM and, and Weather Service Prediction Services, and experts in the area of debris flow to, to determine what that means for the coming season. It will increase the, the thresholds. We're not going to see .3 inches in 15 minutes as a threshold. We'll probably likely see something like a half an inch or three quarter, or, excuse me. Yeah, greater threshold. So you'll, you'll see a half inch to three quarters of an inch, something like that in the 15 minutes as a threshold. So we, we wouldn't be as concerned, and we wouldn't be upstaffing as, as quickly as we would have this year, as we did this year.
Is now the time to ask about specific performance measures, or is that the end?
Yeah, yes. Did you, you have another section, or, no, this is, yeah, go ahead.
No.
They're actually all together in our binder. It's page D51 on the performance measures. I just had a question. I just, this kind of stats just caught my eye. The first was for dispatch center alarm processing, and it was at nine, I'm sure that dispatch center alarm processing for Code 3 medical incidents is 60 seconds or less 90% of the time.
Right.
And it was at 67. And then the two below that, the Code 3 medical incidents was 90%, but it was at 44%. And then responding to Code 3 medical call incidents in 6.25 minutes or less, 90%, and it was at 72. I'm just wondering, the outcomes that we achieved, if there's more resources you need, or if there was, if there were some incidents that were just related to the Thomas Fire, or why those discrepancies are there?
Councilman Friedman, Madam Mayor, so let me first address the fire prevention number that you were inquiring about. This is, this is a number, or a, a goal that we have to respond to, to, or not respond to, but to follow up on our inspections within three weeks of our initial inspection for businesses. And my feeling on that is because of major incidents such as the Whittier Fire, the Thomas Fire, and the debris flow, we didn't, we didn't do well on that. We had, we had so many people committed to so many incidents that we didn't get back to it. You'll see on another page, it's, talks about our, and I'm not sure which page it's on, but it talks about our initial inspection. So we are reaching 100% on those. We're just having difficulty, in some cases, getting back to the business to do our follow-up inspection. That, that's, that means when we go to a business and we might write them a notice for their extinguisher or some electrical problem, that it takes us longer than three weeks to get back to that business. As far as the call processing time and some of the other goals there, we, we're, we're having, I, I don't think those numbers are as bad as they look. I think we're working on the data for that. We're having difficulty getting some good, accurate data on that. I will say that in past years, we've measured that differently, and about a year ago, we, we changed that approach. We, we used to measure it in average response times, and the more we looked at it, the more we looked at NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, guidelines and recommendations, we realized that that's really not a good way to measure it, and so we, we changed our measuring stick to 90% of the time. We're having difficulty measuring that, that met, that metric accurately, so we're, we're working hard to, to try to get that. I think if I can direct your attention to the respond to all Code 3 medical calls in 6.25 minutes or, or less, 90% of the time, we're at 83%. So that, that's a more important number, because it shows, it really, it doesn't, it doesn't show the breakdown, but it shows how long it takes from the time it, the phone gets picked up at dispatch, to the time they dispatch us, and we actually get to the call, so.
Thanks for the clarification. I was just wondering about that.
Sure, yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sneddon?
Thank you. I first just want to commend you. I mean, I know you hear it all the time, but what a, what a fabulous job you did during the two back-to-back disasters. And I'm, I'm wondering too, with all that we've learned from that, when you're working, you said you're working on the debris flow maps, and we've learned so much about the debris flows. Don't stop at 192, artificial lines. And as you're working on this, I'm wondering, who is the team that's working on it? And are you planning for, if there were another fire event that denuded our hillsides, then what the debris flow would be? Or is it just given current fire scars, or how far are you going with the planning on that?
So with the current fire scars in the area, we don't anticipate that the threat to Santa Barbara is severe. There's always a possibility of flooding. We saw flooding, significant flooding in '95 and '98, for instance. That's what that map that you saw, the second map that you saw indicated, and, and so there is a possibility of flooding, especially when you consider high tides and that kind of thing, where Santa Barbara is so low that it, when the tides are high, and we have heavy rainfall, then the water does back out, it's not allowed to drain out to the sea. So we, we, we still do have flooding exposure. Right now, in the absence of severe fire behind Santa Barbara, we're not particularly exposed to debris flow. So we feel, we feel comfortable from that point of view. We are planning, however, and that involves our emergency services person, as well as county folks that, that work on these type of thing, experts in the area, to develop maps that will show us where our problems are in those areas.
So that's in the event that there was a, a fire event?
Correct. In the event that we had a Thomas Fire, or a Hay Sisceda Fire, or a type event in the foothills directly behind Santa Barbara, that would affect the drainages that drain through Santa Barbara.
I think it's a great idea to be ahead of it like that and already have the plan in place. And I had two other questions. One, it's under, it's on D48. And with the new EXELA permitting database test, identify problems and resolve related to fire prevention activities. Could you tell me some more details about that?
I'm going to let Joe Poye comment on that.
Mr. Poye?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, the problem with the interchange of information from Firehouse to EXELA is just a matter of two databases that had difficult time talking to each other. IT has been working on that problem and has pretty much solved it at this point, although at, at some point in the future, we're probably going to be migrating more to EXELA and less in Firehouse. EXELA is a more comprehensive database, and as you know, because you've been involved in the funding of it, it's a citywide. So in other words, an engine company captain will be able to share and receive information from, say, someone in zoning, or someone at the building division, or so forth. So as we move along, we're going to be using EXELA more and more.
And how, how much of that takes into account sort of regional evacuation patterns? Is that part of that program? Or how is it that you come up with evacuation routes?
One of the ways we're going to do that is, and, and we're still waiting for the data to come in from federal agencies and, and the county on the results of this last storm event. But clearly, there's been a lot of discussion about it, and rightly so, that we have to be thinking in terms of vertical evacuations, as well as our traditional horizontal evacuations across the front country. So in the event of a potential flooding or debris flow incident, we'll have different types of evacuation zones for downstream effects, as opposed to the across-the-front-country effects. That isn't solid yet. We haven't established those zones, but when we do, it'll be more likely related to the Everbridge solution, the, the, what would amount to reverse 911, so that properties in those areas would be impacted and, and receive that call to evacuate in the potential event of a flood or debris flow.
Thank you. And does that also include earthquake preparedness, or is earthquakes sort of isolated separately from that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, there, since there's no way to predict earthquakes that's, that's reliable for us, we don't have an evacuation scenario for that specifically.
Thank you. And then I have one other question about the Spanish-language disaster education program, if I could hear more about that.
Councilperson Sneddon, Madam Mayor, we have a couple of slides that can help us illustrate that.
Thank you.
So Spanish-language outreach and support. Beginning this July, so a little over a month from now, we'll have a, a certified translation, translation Spanish-language public education coordinator. And some of the projects and programs that she'll be looking at are Spanish-language CERT, which, if you're familiar with CERT, it's Community Emergency Response Teams, which has been taught widely throughout California for, for many years now. And we'll be, we'll be starting that up again, teaching it in Spanish also. LISOS, which is kind of a scaled-down version of CERT, it's an introduction, introductory toward, to Community Emergency Response. Fire Safety House, which we do now in Spanish, as well as English at many of the schools. There's a lot of Spanish-speaking children, so we, we do have Spanish-language folks that respond and administer those programs. Some of our extinguisher training is done in Spanish, and other daily messaging. So we kind of break it down, we, we break this information piece down into three things. Kind of a daily outreach, then, then we look at local emergencies. So currently, there's a new policy being developed citywide to ensure the consistent release of English and Spanish, for incidents in the city. Translation and messaging assisted by Spanish-speaking firefighters and other city personnel. So within the city, we have approximately 75 employees that earn bilingual pay, and we call on them to, to get the Spanish-language message out. We have approximately 10 firefighters on the fire department that are Spanish, that receive bilingual pay and are Spanish-speaking. Social media, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Nextdoor, and then press releases, all, all done in Spanish. And then the third piece of the puzzle is major disasters such as the Thomas Fire or the debris flow. Police and fire updates are translated into Spanish and, and broadcast on YouTube and, and local TV and radio. Santa Barbara County OEM messaging in English and Spanish. We have information kiosks. We talked a little bit about the, the trap lines during the Thomas Fire. That's, that's what these things are throughout the city in English and Spanish, so the information is posted in both English and Spanish. Emergency banners on the city website, so these, these banners are directly linked to information from Santa Barbara County, which provides Spanish-language support. And then the JIC, Joint Information Center, which exists at County OEM, and is, we, we assist in staffing that with city employees who are Spanish speakers. So that's, that's the program that we have going right now, and, and I think we're doing a pretty good job. We're, we're, we're looking at developing the policy further and, and better defining exactly what we do in every instance.
Can I ask where the kiosks are located, or does it change depending on the incident?
Yeah, generally just put up at frequented places such as markets and coffee shops, et cetera. So where you get a high, high degree of traffic and you can reach the most people.
And, and would it be helpful to you to have a dedicated staff member who was just handling translations and outreach, rather than pulling bilingual staff? Would that be helpful, or is that?
There's, there's a number of positions that I'd like to have, but certainly that would be a help to our staff.
Thank you.
Okay. And I would add to that, that Mr. Casey and I are, will be meeting with someone from Just Communities to talk about, they have a program called GARE, Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And it's about improving our Spanish-language outreach and just government in general, making the Spanish just as important as the English, which, and certainly in an emergency, we'll need to get information out. I'm also meeting with some of the Spanish-language radio people, and they want us to send people there, to the radio station. And, and they'll give us a mic, but I, you know, I can report more on that. We have a couple of public comments speakers, and one of them is Lizzie Rodriguez, who brought this topic to us after the emergencies. And Ms. Zaitsov, did, did you want to talk on fire or police, but Ms. Rodriguez, you come on up first. Okay, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Sorry I was tardy. I drove in from Lumpoke. Thank you for the few slides that you added. This is great. I love to see the, the new information coming out. I would like to add, thank you for asking the question, would it help to have a dedicated person? I think so, yes. It may not seem like a priority in the department, but considering that 46% of the population in Santa Barbara City is Latino, and 33% speak Spanish at home, it should be a priority for our city. The West Side is strongly campaigning for the new city council representative, and they're talking about speaking for the Latino community. Come on. This is so important. This is really good. This is really good. This is a great start, I think, and we need to be culturally aware. We need to know how to communicate information. I love that you're thinking about going onto Bronco Radio, but honestly, when I heard the folks who are not trained in interpretation speak, they said, "We are going to be evacuating yesterday." When are we evacuating? Are we evacuating today, tomorrow, or yesterday? Because when you don't have trained interpreters, it comes out mushy. When you have somebody who speaks a little bit or enough Spanish, it's not enough to give vital information. This is a great start, but we need somebody who will be able to go into the community, develop partnerships, and create policy. Unfortunately, we are in jeopardy of losing Casa de la Rosa, which served as a huge resource at that time. Not to, like, pat myself on the back, but I did too. I'm not going to invoice you for the 100 hours that I spent on making sure that this information was sent out to the Spanish-language community, but I shouldn't have had to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Zeitsoff?
Yes, I'll speak for both.
After the police?
Well, it doesn't matter.
Come on up. You're on our Fire and Police Commission.
I'm jointly speaking for both departments.
Oh, very good.
Honorable Mayor and Council and other honorables who are here, I thought I would just refresh everyone's memory on the function of the Board of the Fire and Police Commissioners as outlined in Section 816 of Article 8 of the Santa Barbara City Charter. Pertinent to today, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners' powers and duties listed, consider with the chiefs of the respective Fire and Police Departments an annual budget of such departments, and make recommendations with respect thereto to the city council and city administrator. I am, Ms. Zeitsoff, you already said my name, but I am one of the commissioners of the Fire and Police Commission. We did hear very detailed and comprehensive budgets for both departments fiscal year 2019, reports from both of the police and fire departments. The commissioners reviewed the proposed budgets, asked questions, made comments, and have approved the two proposed budgets. The commissioners hereby recommend to the city administrator, to the mayor and council, that you do pass the proposed police and fire budgets for fiscal year 2019, and we wish to thank you for your consideration of our recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Zeitsoff. Any other comments or questions for the fire officials, Mr. Hart?
Well, just so I can make this more clear in my mind, the hourly public education coordinator is the person I think Ms. Rodriguez was talking about and you're talking about. So it's just a debate about how many hours I think we're having. Isn't that the case?
So the, yes, essentially, it's the same thing, yes. The public education coordinator isn't called a PIO, which is what Ms. Rodriguez is advocating for. However, that position does a lot of PIO work, and much of her work is outreach, which essentially could be called PIO work also. That position is an hourly position right now, and the proposal is that, I think, by the community, maybe that there'd be a full-time position.
And how many hours is this position planned to be? Is this half-time, or...
Yes, a half-time position, yes.
All right. I think I understand the differences. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks so much, and thanks for the work that you did on the emergencies. I ran into a county employee yesterday in Public Works, and he was still a little bit shell-shocked, I could tell. And I know you all work so hard, and that it was very stressful. And I say that to our police department as well. I know you had roadblocks going and patrol, so people weren't looting in Montecito, so I just wanted to acknowledge how hard everyone worked and how stressful it was. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And I just want to reiterate that it's really the men and women of the police and fire department that have spent so many countless hours, and it was truly, I've been here 31 years, it was truly the most impactful incident or set of incidents that I've ever been involved with. The fire department was greatly impacted with it, and I know the police department was too. I worked with many police officers and law enforcement during both the Thomas Fire and the debris flow, and it just, when it's in your community and involves such a large loss of life, it's really impactful. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. And thanks to the fire marshal and your business manager. Always a pleasure to see you. And we'll switch over to the police department now. Mr. Casey, some of the city council members had some comments on the fire department, and since the chief is still sitting here, the fire chief, go ahead, Ms. Sneddon. Yeah, I'm sorry if I overlooked you.
That's, I mean, we could do it now, or we could do it at the end, just like...
Let's stay with fire, then, since we're, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on that, that I think it would be great to move the half-time position to a full-time position. I think there is education outreach, but not just in putting information out, but for someone to be available to ask questions. I know during disaster and emergencies, I had so many questions, and I had staff that I could ask, and I think having just a point person where people who are in crisis and English is not their native language, and they're hearing information in different ways, and, you know, we all had resources to be able to fact-check that quickly and accurately. So I think it's not just the putting information out and educating, but being able to receive questions. And I can just say, from personal experience, at Peabody School, we're 720 students, and we used to have a translator, you know, different staff people translating, and just got the feedback all the time that, you know, it wasn't translated quite accurately the way a native speaker who is familiar with the families would translate. And I think there's a learning feedback where, if you're putting information out and something wasn't quite right, and when we're talking about people's lives and disasters, I feel like that feedback of what worked this time, what didn't work that time, that institutional knowledge over multiple days and events, I just think we owe it to 50% of our population to have a dedicated staff person, whether that's just in fire or shared among fire, police, or all the agencies that deal in disaster. I'm just thinking of a public comment we had a while ago where, I'm not sure if it was you, Lizzie, or not, but saying how children had to translate back to their parents, the very frightening information that English speakers were sheltering their children from. And instead, if you're a Spanish-speaking parent only and you're relying on your child to translate back to you what the evacuations were, how many people lost lives, where the fire is now, I just feel that this might be the time to talk about moving that half-time position to full-time and really dedicating ourselves to that.
Okay. Any other comments, then?
Well, I guess I have a question about that.
Please.
What is the additional cost to go from half-time to full-time? And is there any plan to share this position with other departments? Is there anything more that you want to tell us about this before we go to the next presentation?
I think we're looking at it from a citywide perspective and looking at tightening up the policy or creating new policy that specifically outlines what we do, and from there, we can move to what's the need. Do we have what we need in place, or do we need additional positions? It is a priority of the fire department, and I know the police department to get the message out, both in English and Spanish. It's a high priority. We realize it's probably one of the most important things that we do. We can certainly respond to emergencies in any language, but getting that message out is critical in no matter what language. To answer your question on costs, I believe the cost is in the neighborhood of $110,000, $120,000.
For the half-time position?
For a full-time equivalent position.
Full-time. And so the price you have in the, the amount you have in the budget now is about 55-ish?
Mr. Casey, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, it'd be less because it's an hourly, so it doesn't include benefits.
Okay.
Just off the top of my head, my guess would be in the $35,000 to $40,000 range, so the delta would be $70,000 to $80,000 when you go to full-time with benefits. And then where it lives, it would depend if your emphasis is on emergency response, then I would leave it in the fire department. They coordinate citywide anyways. If you're just looking for daily public information, then I would think we would want to consider moving some of those funds over and having it housed under the city administrator's office, which deals with general public information. So, depends on your preference. And if you do want to do it, we can add it to the list for items that you can consider that, we do have a balanced budget, so we'd have to figure out how to pay for it, along with other items that might be coming up.
Well, I think we should add it to the list for future deliberations.
Mr. Friedman?
I was just going to make a suggestion. We added an additional finance committee meeting on June 4th to discuss a couple of other additional requests. So would it be appropriate for us to discuss that there, or is this one where, should we kind of have what we need? Those items needed to be fleshed out a little bit more, but this one seems like you kind of have it. So should it be at the finance committee on that special meeting we have on June 4th, or just bring it back as part of the overall deliberations here?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, it's certainly up to you. My recommendation, advice would be is, I think the full council is kind of hearing it today. It goes to the list on June 6th, when you do your final budget deliberations, and look at all the different requests that you have that you then need to balance. I'd keep it at the full council unless the finance committee members here feel there's a desire to dig deeper into it, but we'll bring the information back on June 6th about the actual delta cost difference as opposed to just my ballparking it here.
It'd be good to have that at the finance commission discussion, because I think ideally, we'd like to figure out all those, you know, additions, subtractions to give a recommendation to the council.
Yeah, my only suggestion on that is I think that some of your other requests that you have us considering is going to be coming on that Monday, June 4th council meeting. The city attorney's office has a request for a couple additional positions. Community Development has some items coming up. So there's a lot of moving pieces that I think are going to come up in this latter half of your departmental presentations that, based upon your prior comments, I think you're going to be interested and intrigued on. Again, we can add it to the finance committee meeting, though there's no harm in doing that.
Well, if you have the information, what is...
It just may not be total of all the different items that you're going to be considering as a full council.
Okay. Well, as many of those as you can put together would be helpful. Thank you.
And Mr. Casey, I would add, so if the position is full-time and shared with fire and police and city administrator's office for just general Spanish outreach, I would support that. I know the budget is really tight, and if it's something that we have to consider for the next budget cycle, that might have to be a reality for us. But I'm supportive of a position like that going into the future, so. Any other comments or questions for fire? Mr. Casey?
So I don't need a motion. I'm sensing we'll add the item for conversation at the finance committee and add it to the list for deliberations for council when you give us final direction.
Very good. Okay, we will close the fire section now. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. I'm here with my staff to present our fiscal year 2019 budget. To my left is our business manager, Lori Peterson, and we've got Captain Alta Villa here as well as Captain Stoney that may chime in if you have more specific questions. So moving on, our outline is, as you've heard with the other city departments, we're going to go through our overview, the proposed budget fee changes, as well as key initiatives and performance objectives. So this, very quickly, I just want to touch upon, I like to show this to remind you that we divide our operations into three main areas, our community and support services, as well as investigations, internal operations, and then field operations, and that we are there 24/7 doing a lot of things, not just responding to radio calls. We have our combined communication center that we manage, as well as a record staff that's always processing reports and arrests and whatnot, as well as a fully functioning investigative bureau. We've got animal control, parking enforcement as well. Now, this chart that we're proposing for 2019 is different than you've seen in the past. We have one less full-time position because we're proposing a consolidation of an administrative specialist and a record specialist so that we can bring in a records manager. We have had collateral duty for lieutenants in investigations to oversee that position, and frankly, it's too vital, I think, from a customer service standpoint, and more importantly, from an efficiency and effectiveness standpoint, without having somebody committed to that function and looking at some of the innovations with technology to make it more efficient. I think ultimately, we can reduce some of our future personnel if we look at operations, make them more efficient, and ultimately, make them better for our community as well. So just very quickly, this is our department. Should we be fully staffed where the positions are allocated? And it highlights, as I said before, that we do a lot of different things, but the majority of our people are where we really need to have them in field operations. So with this, I would like to turn our budget proposal portion over to Lori Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lori Peterson, and I'm the police department business manager. Today, I'll be presenting the proposed changes in revenues and expenditures for fiscal year In this chart, it's a summary of our revenues by the types of funds. The majority is the general fund. We do have some own, our own departmental revenue, and then some grants that are received as well. Combined, they're approximately $43 million. Grant funds, when you're looking at our department, we only budget those when they're actually received for the most part. So the Office of Traffic Safety and the ABC grants that we receive, when they're presented to us, we accept them at that point and then would make our budget adjustments. The grant section will increase next year when the actual grants are received, if we receive them. The departmental revenues come from parking citations, permits, service charges, special event fees, and are approximately $4.8 million. Over here is a pie chart, just kind of representing the combination of the grants and departmental revenues coming in. As you can see, parking violations is the majority of our revenue at $2.7 million. We have the half-cent sales tax, Prop 172, that represents 5%. And then we have licenses, permits, and municipal fines, internal charges, and service fees. So in this next, for fiscal year 2019, we did make some adjustments from the original plan. They were reductions. The department has had to make revenue adjustments downwards basically for the last two or three years, and that's just reflecting where our revenues are not coming in where they used to. The parking violations are a minor adjustment. We have a vendor who provides the parking database system, and that's kind of an adjustment for increasing fees as they, for doing business. We've sent out more citations, follow-up, doing franchise tax board, DMV, so that component there. Then we also have licenses, fees, and fines. They have sent sales tax. What I would like to show you on the next slide, though, is the detail kind of of what comes into some of those categories. So in licenses, fees, and fines, that's where we have our taxi cab revenues, pedicabs and dance permits. Taxi cab revenues is both for owners and the drivers themselves, and that's one area where we continue to see a decline. And we can pretty much find that that's related to Uber and Lyft, and that's just a change in how people are doing business. And so we've kind of taken the reduction in that area to reflect that. Municipal court fines are in here as well, so that's traffic citations and animal... Municipal court fines are in here as well, so that's traffic citations, and animal licensing fees are in this category as well. General, the service charges, some of those charges include vehicle release fees, document reproduction fees, identification fees, and parking citation printing fees. These, the two in particular, reproduction fees and identification fees, just kind of change from year to year. If, if there are less reports requested that copies be made of, then we're finding that. The vehicle release fees is a significant change for us, as the state law has changed when vehicles can be towed and that. And so we took, I think it was a $50,000 reduction in that area alone, just reflecting what the activity is now. We don't tow as many vehicles, so we don't have as much coming in, in the release fees area. And then live scan area, there are other agencies that do offer that service, and so it just depends from year to year where people choose to go and get that done. And the internal charges, there was a $50,000 reduction here done as well, and that's to reflect the traffic safety fund comes in in its own fund, and then we transfer that money into the department to be spent in the patrol program. This is an area where we've seen ongoing reductions, and so we just took, we reduced it by 50,000, hoping to get closer to the actual revenue that's coming in. On the expenditure side, because we had a reduction in revenues, we had to do a matching reduction in expenditures. In salaries and benefits, while there is a $99,000 reduction, one of the things that we had to do this last year is we were doing our backgrounds with retired personnel, and that's no longer a process that we can do, and so we've now had to hire a consultant, two consultants outside to do those background checks for us. So what we did is we transitioned the hourly revenue that was allowing us to do those background checks in-house, and then moved that over into the contracts to cover that expense. We did some adjustments in supplies and services downward of about $65,000, and some minor adjustments in our non-capital to match the reduction in revenue of $173,000. As the chief spoke about, we did put in the request to eliminate two special, a record specialist position and an administrative specialist position, and then that's a neutral swap for a management position. So we're looking for the change in staffing, but there should be no impact on the budget for that. In our fees this year, we don't have any significant changes proposed. We did a minor increase of 50 cents for the online service fee that the vendor charges for making payments for parking citations online. We added some language that was missing in some of the areas, just to make it clear that if your check is returned for insufficient funds, that we can add on the additional fees that are related to that process. In this coming year, we're actually, we've already started it, there's a collaboration effort between the Police Department and Parks and Recreation to look at the special event permitting process and evaluate what those fees are related to and, and how people interact in that process, and looking for a consolidated way to do that. So while the fees aren't changing for this fiscal year at this point, we are going through the process of doing the analysis to see if they're still appropriate or if changes are needed for that. And that is it for the budget section.
So in regards to our key initiatives and performance objectives, I want to point out, I've, I've shared this at our updates before, the department has adopted a 21st century policing philosophy, and that is important because the focus of it is to emphasize community policing and trust between the department and the community. There are six pillars within that philosophy. So to help institutionalize that into the organization, we've done several things to include them in our management contracts, our hiring processes, our promotional processes, as well as some of our internal specialty processes. So this year, we aligned them to our performance objectives and P3 goals. So all of them are going to be organized under one of those pillars, and what makes that, I think, important, not only for us to know why we're doing what we're doing, but it's transparent and translates to the community as well. So I'm going to turn these over specifically to Captain Altavilla to process.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Alex Altavilla, I'm the Field Operations Captain with the Police Department, and what I'm going to go ahead and do is walk through and explain our P3 objectives, specifically project measurable or other performance measures, and how they align with the six pillars of the 21st century policing. Also, I'm going to go ahead and discuss some of the highlights of some of the initiatives. I have to take the time to go ahead and do a shout-out to Matt Four in the City Administrator's Office, who is just a complete rock star. I mean, he really sat down, was engaged in this P3 process, and really helped us out to go ahead and coordinate and put all this together, so I really, really appreciate that. Start off with the pillar number one, which is building trust and legitimacy. One of them is answering 911 calls within five seconds or less. This is a P3 measurable objective and a combined communication center, and when the public needs help, they call our combined communication center. And often, this is the first time they will have any type of contact with the Police Department, with a public safety dispatcher answering the phone and ascertaining whether they need police or fire services. Responding to priority one calls for service within seven minutes is, again, in my division, the field operations and a P3 measurable objective. A priority one call for service is a call for service that could result in injury and/or death, and the community deserves a quick and timely response to these types of calls for service. Citizen academies are a P3 measurable objective that is in our media, our community and media relations program, and these enable us to go ahead and help build transparency, trust, and build relationships. Currently, this year, we are slated to complete one English and two Spanish citizens academies. And in FY19, we have, again, three citizens academies that we have slated to go ahead and teach. Neighborhood watch group meetings is a community and media relation program, new P3 measurable objective, and this is going to help us engage diverse neighborhoods, quite frankly, in their areas of concern and the micro-communities that we have outside in the neighborhoods. And in FY19, we're proposing 12 of those. Volunteers and community liaison, business contacts is a community support services program measurable objective, and this will enable us to engage the business community better, to understand exactly what their unique, unique needs are for services, and proposed FY19 is going to be 2,500 contacts. The next pillar, which is pillar number two, is the policy and oversight. The chief has already established her advisory panel. This is an informal sounding board directly to the chief from a diverse group of community members that are representative of the community. And since the establishment of this, the chief has already had two meetings with this group. Professional standards software is a, a initiative in the chief's staff. This is basically police integrity software. It enables us to go ahead and better manage and track our internal investigations and identify any type of training needs if appropriate. Quarterly audits of our evidence room are, is a measurable objective in our property room, and these are basically random audits that are conducted by our professional standards sergeant involving cases that involve guns, drugs, or money. And in FY19, we're, again, proposing one a quarter. And then also in the chief's staff, a P3 measurable objective of investigate citizens' complaints within 120 days. This is mandated by, by law to be able to go and investigate these within a year. Again, it could be a complaint against policy, procedure, or personnel. It's good public relations and also good internal service to our employees, and our FY19 goal is to go ahead and complete 70% in 120 days. And then the, the last one under this pillar is department-wide policy update. It's a project objective in the community services support division, and we're in the process of basically auditing and updating our complete policy manual. Pillar number three is technology and social media. The first pillar is a crime view dashboard software. This is an information technology project. It is already in use. It provides real-time information on crime trends and traffic trends. It'll provide us with the opportunity to make our officers more proactive, and it's something that we are currently using in all of our field operations division briefings. Cloud-based mobile auto video storage for the district attorney's office is a property room project objective, and basically what this will allow is allow the DA's office to directly view and download our car mobile audio videos or Mavs. It'll reduce the workload and increase, increase the efficiency and evidence to the discovery to the DA's office. Proximity dispatch implementation is an initiative. It's in the information technology program. This is something that is a collaborative effort between the fire department and the combined communication center. I've been working with Lieutenant Kushner, Kushner, and also Acting Fire Chief Lee Waldron on this. And basically what it does is it recommends the closest fire apparatus based on GPS coordinates, and we're looking at the ability for it to go ahead and reduce fire response times. And then the last one under this pillar is increased social media followers. This is a community media relations measurable objective. We've already seen an increase in Facebook, Instagram, which is photographs, Nixel, and Twitter postings. Our goal is to continue to further reach a broader audience. We also actually saw a 30% increase in our followers during the fire and debris flows, and in FY19, we're proposing a 750 increase in our followers. Under pillar number four, which will be a community policing, one of the pillars, which is basically a restructuring that we've done, is the neighborhood policing unit. And what this has allowed us to do is a single point of coordination and communication for those proactive units, be they B coordinators, street crimes unit, which is our bike team, special enforcement team, which handles gang enforcement, and also our downtown nightlife, restorative policing, our volunteer program, and our SNAP program. The restorative policing program is a, a new measurable objective that is going to be under our community support services program, and this one is currently staffed with two officers and two hourly employees. And the FY, we're in the, we're in the process of basically establishing 35 active cases in the restorative policing realm, so we can help some of these folks that need assistance in our homeless population. Transient camp cleanups, again, is with our street crimes unit program. It's a P3 measurable objective. We coordinate this with Public Works, and in FY18, we're projected to go ahead and complete 46 camp cleanups. Community services meetings, this one is under our street crimes unit, again, a measurable objective. This is our attendance at the neighborhood partnership meetings, which is PATH, which used to be the Milpus Action Task Force, and we also attend the downtown Santa Barbara Safety Committee meetings. And then our volunteers and policing, again, a community support service P3 other program measure. Currently, we have 12 volunteers. Again, they're just a, an amazing ambassador for us in the city, in the field, and also in the station lobby. FY19, we're going to project over 3,000 hours donated by the volunteers, and we're also very eager and poised to expand that program as funding allows. The PAL and Explorer Program is, again, under the community and media relations as a other P3 program measure. It's a great tool for prevention and recruitment for a department. Currently, we have 800 youth in our PAL program. We also have, which is outstanding, 40 drop-ins a day at the teen center, and 25 current explorers. And in FY19, we are projecting a little over 1,900 volunteer hours for our explorers. And then the SNAP program is an initiative under community services, and it began on April 1st. We have, currently have three SNAP officers. Four are in background, and since its inception, we've handled, or they've handled, 129 calls for service, and that's year-to-date, and they've also issued 554 parking citations. Pillar number five, which is training and education, the first one is post-mandated training. This is a training and recruitment program project objective. It involves buying, biannual training for our sworn and our dispatchers. It involves training such as perishable skills, driving, forced options, and self-defense, and the measure is to ensure that 95% of our sworn and reserve officers receive post-mandated training. Quarterly qualification shoots are in our range program, again, a measurable objective, and that is to ensure that 100% of our active duty officers and reserves qualify before we actually deploy them in the field. Our portable forced option simulator, again, is an initiative. It allows us to go ahead and use this for a forced option simulation training, can also use it for community interaction and public awareness. Implicit bias and procedural justice training. We've completed training of 60 officers, and this training is ongoing, and we're also seeking post-certification for the course. It's a partnership with Just Communities to help co-instruct, and Just Communities is also in the process of providing training to the public. And then last one under this pillar is our Voices Initiative, and this is under training and recruitment. Again, it's a workshop for officers that are going through post-academy, meaning they get out of the academy and they go through this. They travel to local partnering organizations and engage in facilitated dialogue, and the organizations, organizations that serve these people are often unrepresented, our immigrant population, and also our LGBTQ community. And then the last one under this is a new training officer position that we went ahead and added. This is for better coordination of department-wide training and funds for the department. We're looking to train, training needs that are above kind of post-mandated things, be it, be it active shooter or crowd control, and also to kind of stay forward-leaning and on our toes with recruitment and hiring. And then under the last pillar, pillar number six, which is officer safety and wellness, maintain full staffing levels at 90%, 95% or higher. This is a P3 measurable objective. Again, this is 95% of authorized, authorized hiring standards. It increases employee safety when we have more people in staff. It allows for more proactive work and less, less overtime, and it gives obviously our officers more time with, with their families. The chaplain program, again, is an initiative. We use it for critical incidents to help the public through crises. I was extremely impressed with these folks during the debris flow, out there, meeting with our folks in the community, and it's great. Even from time to time, they come up and they walk along the, the third floor of the apartment where all the command staff is, and they just check on her well-being, and I really appreciate that. They do a great job. And the at-ease program is another initiative. It's confidential and individual. It's confidential and individualized counseling services. It's designed for the unique needs of public safety personnel. And it's also actually been used by the Fire Department with some great benefits to their staff and also their families. And then I can never say enough about the Police Foundation. They provide resources and financial support for our injured and ill officers. They assist in financial assistance for the At Ease Program. And they also funded our volunteer program. And then the last bullet here is our Modified Duty Program, which is under my division, Field Operations, is an other program measure. And it's designed to get people back to work, our employees back to work. And it's coordinated now with a citywide team, with Police Department, Human Resources, City Attorney, and Risk Management. And it does ultimately result in the reduction of lost work hours. So with that, we're all available to ask, answer any questions you have.
Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Peterson, you mentioned that background checks can no longer be done by retired. Is that a regulatory change or is that just a practical change?
That was, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rouse, Madam Mayor. One of the rulings from PERS that says we cannot supplement positions with retirees on that hourly basis. And it's affected the state as a whole.
That's really too bad. It seems like you lose a lot of expertise and some familiarity with a local agency that way. It's too bad. Another question I had was about noise violations. We were talking about different violations in recovery and whatnot. And I know that as the noise ordinance was applied initially in coordination with our SNAP program and primarily dealing with the area around City College, but it's a question that's come up a lot around, especially the downtown area, and how we apply it. And I know it's always a tricky thing. We went away from the decibel standard into an audible standard. What's the status of, and I'm sure this applies to your nightlife team as much as anyone, noise, enforcement, response to complaints? The ordinance is in place, but is there, what is the department policy as far as enforcement goes?
Councilmember Rouse, Madam Mayor, we have not been utilizing that municipal code section for an application broadly across downtown for businesses as we have with the residences. We have the ability to do that, but my understanding part when I arrived that that was not the intent of us creating that. It's a very valid tool, very effective, should we want to shift and use that. But also, I want to say, we've been looking at what we believe to be an outdated dance permit and looking at more progressive permitting in the area of entertainment permits that give us more tools to control things when establishments have amplified music at the basic level, not just dancing, which I think as we move towards a mixed-use type community possibly, if we expand some more residential area downtown, we're going to see a lot more of those noise complaints. But like everything else, unfortunately, we prioritize, and that's one that takes us a little longer to get to.
Well, and that was precisely my point, is that we try to encourage residential infill in the downtown urban areas. And of course, we're going to clash with what are now established nightclubs and other entertainment areas. So it sounds like you're already chatting about it. So thank you.
Yes, sir. And I believe with some of our recommendations for modifications to special event permitting may include that entertainment permit as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sneddon.
Thank you. I think I might have been fourth in line, but no, okay. I had a couple of questions. One about, under the street crime, on page D93, transient camp cleanups. And I'm just wondering how that goes. Where do homeless people go? Do you feel you have the resources you need to direct people where they need to go? Just.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, that program, we could do a variety of different cleanups. We have the one slated for FY19 in the proposed budget, but we typically go out and we post those ahead of time. And we make sure that those that are going to be affecting those campsite areas are aware that we're going to be coming back at a later date to clean that up. And we go ahead and go there with Public Works to make sure that they have access to services if they want them prior to cleaning it all up.
Thank you. And then under the Crime Lab Section, D96 and 97, it seems like you have a really high rate of processing evidence. And I know nationally, there's been this question about unprocessed rape kits. And I'm wondering where we are with that as a city.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, I checked on that about three weeks ago, and we are up to date. We do not have any that are not processed that should be.
That is so excellent. Thank you. And it's really nationally quite a problem. Thank you. And then for the Volunteers in Policing, how much of a budget does that take? And you said you would expand if the budget allowed? And thoughts on that?
I will turn it over to Captain Stoney, who oversees our volunteers.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, we started off with a $5,000 budget that was from our Police Foundation. We currently have 12 volunteers. I had the sergeant who's in charge of that program kind of do a cost analysis. Initially, we were looking at about $1,800 per volunteer. That includes a background check, all the equipment they need, badge, the flash light, the stuff that we provide them to go out into the field. The nice thing about it is, once we get them basically up and running, there's minimal ongoing costs. So initially, we're talking about 1,800, but that can also, that's variable. Initially, we had to buy all-new badges, all-new equipment for them. As we cycle people through, probably the costs will go down a little bit.
And do you have a sense for how many more would make the next incremental impact? Or is it just as many as you can have?
There is, from a supervisory standpoint, at some point, you can exceed the ability to supervise them. But I know the direction I have for my boss is you'd like to see 50 volunteers. So that's the goal that I have.
Is that five zero?
Five zero.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hart.
I had a question about parking enforcement. I've had a number of people talk to me about downtown parking enforcement off-hours. And so is there a times, how does it work now with parking enforcement officers? Do they have hours of work or do they work all around the clock? Because what I'm hearing is people are parking in red zones in the evenings and that there's not as much enforcement during the evening as there is during the daytime.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, right now, there are obviously timed enforcement zones which are handled by our parking enforcement officers. And those are typically during the daytime hours. We currently have parking enforcement that is seven days a week. And in some cases, after those time zones close down, so to speak, that enforcement would be taken over by Field Operations Officers that can be called out in a call for service or if they see the violation. Or even, in some cases, by our SNAP officers. So there is enforcement at night from an on-view perspective, but we're always more than happy from a call for service to come out and resolve the issue.
So the parking enforcement officers primarily are working on the time zones and then otherwise other, and while they're out there, they see red zone violations as well. But in the evenings, it's the officers that are taking care of the red zone.
Correct, in general terms, yes, sir.
Good. And then I had, the Creeks Committee raised questions about the street sweeping program and how the revenues and the costs are allocated. Can you give me more information about that? You know, I think Mr. Muldever specifically talked about the time the parking enforcement officers spend on a shift writing street sweeping tickets as opposed to parking violations. And how is that tracked and allocated? And then also the revenue that comes to the department from those park, those street sweeping violations? He was particular, and the committee talked about violations that are paid late and accumulate to a larger amount. I don't know if that is even a significant amount of money, but the Creeks Committee is very interested in making sure that the costs and the revenues are allocated properly because they are the backstop for the net cost of that program. And just wanted to, they raised those issues, wanted to hear more about that if you could.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, this issue actually came up back in 2010 when I was a Field Operations Commander last time. I'll give you a little bit of a historical perspective. But the program was established back in February of 2006. And it basically is a collaboration between the Police Department, Public Works, and Parks and Recs of Creeks. It's administered by the Police Department, and it is enforced five days a week. Public Works pays for three PEOs, which are basically deployed Monday through Thursday. And we realize that during the day, street sweeping doesn't go ahead and take the full shift. So we go ahead and actually staff on Friday also because it's an important program, which benefits, obviously, the community in the Creeks. The schedule for the PEOs for street sweeping is done three months in advance. And we always go ahead and, on any given day, the first three, the first three PEOs are given to street sweeping. So if we're in a situation where we have somebody calling sick or they're on vacation on any particular day, we, as a police department, will go short on a timed beat. But three PEOs will always be dedicated towards street sweeping. We went ahead and looked at the citations, and it's interesting because they follow a very predictable pattern during specific times of year based on, you know, weather and whatnot. Obviously, you're going to see a little bit of an increase in the variance in December of '17 and January of '18 based on the fire and debris flows from an issuance perspective. And then the issuance of these citations, quite frankly, are violator-driven. And I think over a period of time since 2006, people become aware that, you know, they're going to be coming around on certain days. So there's a group of people that obviously are going to move their vehicles. I think the challenging part comes where it's the, when they come in and actually pay for the violation. Paying for the citation is basically economy and due process-driven. We don't have a lot of control over when people actually come in and pay those. So that trend could be a little bit more volatile, so to speak. But ultimately, the unpaid citations are going to be waiting for the violator either through the State Franchise Tax Board or at the DMV. Again, this was a, this was a matter that came up back in 2010 that we were able to go ahead and resolve through some dialogue with our colleagues at other city departments. And I'm confident we could do the same thing with this one.
Okay, well, that would be great. I think that they're just concerned that there isn't a tracking way to get those fines that accumulate and turn from a $50 ticket into a, you know, I don't even know what they turn into, but more. And when they come in as revenue at the end of the day through the DMV, that that isn't necessarily being accounted for as a street sweeping violation. I don't know if that's true. Maybe Peterson knows, but I think that was their policy question, is to make sure that the revenue side of the equation in terms of violations is properly accounted to the street sweeping operation. So, because the Creeks is paying the net difference. And so they're concerned about the cost side, which I think you answered clearly, saying that the parking enforcement officers are doing street sweeping. That's their primary task. It's not like their costs are split between time, parking enforcement, and street sweeping. They're doing street sweeping, and that's what they're being charged, that's what Creeks is being charged for. And then there's this other question on the revenue side about whether all of the revenues are being properly accounted for in the Creeks Division.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, so with a $48 street sweeping citation, the current process is, is the state takes $12.50. So every time a citation is paid, the state gets their $12.50. The next chunk is $27.50, and that goes to Public Works for the street sweeping program. So the remaining balance of $8 is what remains with the Police Department as the administrative fee for running the program. There is, when a citation goes late, the citation basically doubles and it becomes $96. When it is paid, either through the DMV, the Franchise Tax Board, or if someone just finally gets around to paying it, even though it's doubled, the base values, the state, the $27.50 to Public Works, those go. And then we do hold the remainder of the 48 in our possession. Some of the citations that I've processed recently and looking at the reports that we run monthly of, here's what was received as revenue, and this is part of the street sweeping program. We're collecting on citations from 2012, 2013, 14, 15. It just takes a while. They sit there in the system. Part of that process also, though, is when you assess, when you send it to the DMV, there's a fee, there's a $4 fee to place that hold. When you send it to the Franchise Tax Board, there's a fee that's related to that as well. There's the notifications that go with each of those processes. So there are additional fees that we don't have calculated into our $8 administrative fee, but come out of that basically late fee that comes in, so.
Well, that's really helpful. It shows how complicated this is. And if you can, if you can just look at that to see if this is a significant issue or not, you know, they're looking for every way to save their Measure B funds for Creeks purposes. And they're looking to be, those costs to be fairly allocated. So if you could just take a look at that particular part of it, I think that would be helpful to them.
Sure. We'd be happy to meet with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Well, thank you for all the great work you did and also during the Thomas Fire and Debris Flow that your department did. A few questions. First, actually, I want to thank you again for, Mike was about to fall off there, for all the performance measures for homeless. I just want to point some of these out to show the great work that the community policing and restorative efforts on, one is the reunification of homeless members. You had adopted 20, and this year, you're projecting 62. That's just an outstanding number. It really gets to the heart of what you're accomplishing, and it makes a big difference, not only for our community, but for the individuals themselves to be reunited. So I want to thank you for your work. And that also gets into the number of cleanups that you've been doing. You went to 46, and you were budgeted for, I think it was 16 or so. So it's having a positive impact in terms of our environment and those conditions. And so just wanted to thank you for those. Had a couple of questions. The first is, I just was wondering on this one, it's D84. It's the special request from City Hall, citizens' inquiries, and outside agencies. I'm just wondering, it says you had adopted 21, but there was 42. So I just was wondering what types of inquiries those are? Or are we at City Hall asking too much of you since we're doubling it? But I'm just kind of understanding what that metric is.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that is inquiries that go into our professional standard sergeant's office. And they can be inquiries that end up coming through for personnel records or policy issues that are requested from other city departments. You know, claims, risk management ends up coming through and those kind of things. So we're more than happy to go ahead and help out and provide whatever we can.
That's just one of those that fluctuates from year to year.
Yes, sir.
Different things. The other one, I just, you already actually answered one of it, but on D91, it goes into the different priority calls. And I was just wondering, what goes into a Priority 1 versus a Priority 2? You already answered what a Priority 1 call is, but what's a Priority 2 and a Priority 3 and a Priority 4? So we can understand why the response times are different.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, typically, like I said, a Priority 1 call for service is one that's going to, could potentially result in injury or death. Priority 2 would be one that obviously would not result in injury or death. The Priority 3 calls for service are going to be some of our more quality-of-life in-progress calls, you know, vandalisms, those kind of things that maybe are property-related, that don't really have anything to do with harm to an individual. And then Priority 4 calls for service are typically our investigations. You know, if somebody comes home and their house has been burglarized, and they don't know if it happened over the weekend or when. All of those, obviously, are extremely important to us because they're extremely important to that particular person that calls. But that's kind of how we delineate all the different calls for service.
That's all I had. I just wanted to more congratulate you on the great work you're doing and look forward to next year, and appreciate it.
I'll ask, I hear from some restaurant owners in the 400 and 500 block of State Street. They were hoping there could be more of the gray shirt presence in the evening. And Councilmember Hart did ask about... And Councilmember Hart did ask about what happens at night. I, maybe people think they can get away with more when it's dark. But Chief, your volunteers in policing, the gray shirts, they're mainly daytime patrol?
Madam Mayor, Council, yes. Right now, the initial 12 we have are typically a daytime group. We intentionally created that program to be multi-generational, should we want to expand and have students or others be a part. We could see that expanding into the evening. I have a vision of our volunteer program being able to provide traffic control and barricades when we have collisions, so officers could continue to answer radio calls as they are paid to do so. And then, expand in more patrol, walking, BEATs, even disabled parking enforcement details with the ability to write parking tickets. And I see very easy, we can expand that parking aspect, if it's something in a red zone or a hazard, that if we have the right people in the right place trained to do so, we could pull that off.
And I know our budget is so tight this year, but that would be, on my wish list for the future, would be the economical community policing force in the evenings. There's a lot of young people out there in the evenings on State Street, and our constant street people out there. But I just know uniformed officers are so expensive, and to me, the VIPs have been effective, and the red shirts have been effective during the daytime hours, that if there's a way to help improve our quality of life on State Street in the evenings through community policing efforts, that it would be economical and effective. So, I wanted to register my comment on that. And we're open for comments. I don't see any public comment speaker slips, Mr. Casey. So, anything else from the council to let our police department know? I don't see any lights, so that's good. Mr. Casey, when is the next public hearing? We don't have a city council meeting on Tuesday. It's the Memorial Day holiday.
So, the next budget work session is Thursday, May 31st. It will be Library and the Community Development Department at 9:00 a.m. here in Council chambers.
Nine in the morning, Thursday, so a week from today. Okay, folks, that's it. I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.